Hey, good evening, Gwinnett County. Want to thank y'all for joining us for our DeCulah City Council Meet the Candidates Forum. I'll be your host tonight, Edward Paul, President of the Gwinnett and ACP. Want to definitely thank both candidates that showed up tonight. We did invite all of the candidates running for city council, but we're going to work with the ones that did decide to come, but we did extend invitation to our current council member Dennis Haynes, as well as Mr. Jason Shelton, running for a post. Oh, they don't have it by post based on in DeCulah. But those are the two council members. So we have Jason Shelton running against Erica Pope for one of the council seats. And Ionia Mason running against Mr. Dennis Haynes, who's an incumbent. So we did invite Mr. Haynes, but since he's not here, we'll deal with Ionia Mason, who is running against him, as well as we will, we not quite ready to put her on stage, her Erica on stage quite yet. But we're there. Those are going to be the two candidates that'll be running in Jason Shelton, who's running against Ms. Erica Pope. So before we go into the actual candidates themselves, just want to do, go over a few upcoming final forums that we have. So we do have our final Meet the Candidates Forum on Grayson City Council Candidates, which will take place on Sunday at seven o'clock. And that will be between Rochelle Wright and Mr. Michael Bruce, running for Grayson City Council in Grayson, Georgia. I know there's been a lot of information coming out from us about Grayson not having signage. It looks like they have posted digital on their digital signboard about the election. We still expect signs to be in and around the precinct so that people can know that that is the early voting precinct. So again, you know, if you live in any of these municipalities that are having elections, whether that's DeCulah, whether that's Grayson, Snellville, Lawrenceville, Norcross, Duluth, any of the 15 out of 17 municipalities that are having elections this November, or any of the early voting precincts, please send in any complaints to our office if you're having any trouble voting at any of these locations. We did get a complaint that a voter was turned away for using their military ID. And in Georgia, you are allowed to use your military ID if you don't have your driver's license on you. You are allowed to use your student school ID if you attend a public state school here in Georgia. So that'd be Kennesaw State or Georgia Tech or the University of Georgia, any of those schools or even Georgia Gwinnett College. Your student ID does allow you to be able to vote if you do not have a driver's license. State ID, of course, is applicable as well as well as your gun license. So again, any issues at the polling precinct, please file a complaint on our website, And so now, that being said, we can bring on our candidates for tonight. All right, so we're going to order, I guess I'll go in alphabetical order. Like I said, you all will have two and a half minutes to introduce yourselves to the city of DeCulah, both those who are in the city limits and those outside the city limits, since any decisions y'all make will impact even those that may live outside the city limits, but still live in the city of DeCulah. As I've always stated before, you know, support your local candidates. If you like what you hear from them, if you're not able to vote for them because you're in an unincorporated part of the county, you still can show your support by giving a little money and donating to them. So I will start with Ms. Ionia Mason. You can kick us off. Once you introduce yourself to Gwinnett County and more importantly, to the city of DeCulah.
Hello, my name is Ionia Mason. I'm a mother, a paraprofessional in special education. And I'm a recent, well, three-year recent member of Georgia. I've been here for three years, DeCulah specifically for three years. And I'm into this and I'm, I've decided to become city council. I see there's many things that can change. And if there's not one person that will stand up to see or to speak up, it should be me. So I decided to run. There was, their politics have never been in my realm, but I feel that somebody who is compassionate should actually stand up and be the voice for those who sit in the background.
All right. Thank you. You way under time. So we appreciate that. All right. So we'll also turn it, and I want to be clear, neither of these two beautiful ladies are running against each other. They are running against different opponents. So they are in two different city council races in DeCulah. So I want to make sure that's clear. We did invite their opponents to run and I mentioned their names earlier. They chose not to come. So we're gonna, you know, talk to them and learn about why they're running. And so now Ms. Erica Pope, it's your turn. Introduce us.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you so much to the NAACP for this opportunity, just to not only introduce myself, but to introduce people to DeCulah. So I am a social worker by trade. I have lived in DeCulah since 2016. My husband and I bought a home here. Both of our daughters go to DeCulah Elementary and Middle School respectively. So they're in the cluster. And as a social worker, of course, I'm connected. I'm a community connector. I connect people to resources. I connect people to each other. So it just made sense for me to run for city council. So what's most important about me running is because first of all, in 2023, I ran the first time. I learned a lot. I was able to apply a lot to who I am as a person, but as a social worker as well. And what I learned was that a lot of DeCulah felt unheard. We had a lot of fast growth, but our diversity wasn't shown in our leadership. So I ran. And so in 2023, I came very, very close. I lost my race by 10 votes. And as a result, I decided to not just, you know, retreat, but to come back. And so that's what we're doing right now is we came back to the drawing board. We became very strategic. I say we because my plan, it wasn't just me, it was my team. It was very important for me to not only come back, but to come back with the idea and the focus on voter education. So my platform is very, very simple. It's community engagement, transparent communication and transparent leadership. And then also business support because our businesses, they, they make the cities hum. So I am just a representative of everyone, not just incorporated to DeCulah, but unincorporated. I am very, you know, present in my community and it just makes sense for me to make sure that our council looks like our community. So again, thank you for the opportunity. I'm so appreciative to be able to just represent all of us because that's what this is about. And Gwinnett is a melting pot and all of our cities are as well. So leadership should reflect that.
All right. Okay. We might be able to get out of here on time tonight. All right. All right. So Ms. Pope, since you got the floor, we'll, we'll stick with you in terms of answering the first question. And then Ms. Mason, we'll transition to you with the same question. So I know one of the biggest things that I'm hearing from, you know, different candidates, you know, this is our fourth one now, fourth forum we're on, is about transparency, public engagement. A lot of the public feel like a lot of these city councils are hiding. They're not in, in the public. They're not engaged. So how, if elected, how would you ensure transparency, public engagement and accountability with any of the city council's decision?
Absolutely. And transparency is my favorite word these days. Simply because when I ran the first time, there was a lack of transparency, even with my election. So when I am elected, because that just sounds better. I will ensure that there's accessibility, not just to me as a councilwoman, but accessibility to the council in whole. Currently, right now, we don't have any hybrid options. So most acute lands, we commute back and forth between all of the, you know, cities in metro Atlanta. And so what that looks like is that we're not really able to participate in our meetings. And that's not because we don't want to. That's a huge misconception. What really that means is that it's not accessible. So I, after I, you know, ran the first time, I came to them. I said, hey, I knocked on doors. And a lot of people felt like they didn't have accessibility to their, their council. And the reason why? Because they weren't able to participate. So I put it in front of them like, hey, we're like a really big city. We should be able to have Zoom options because everybody had Zoom and COVID. So why can't we do it now? And I was met with resistance. So upon becoming a city councilwoman of DeCulah, that's the best, that's the bare basic thing we can do is be accessible to people. And once you have accessibility, the rest follows, right? Currently, right now, my opponent, he was appointed into his position in January. And the only reason why I know that is because I just happened to be scrolling on the website and was like, who is this young man? And it's because there was a lack of communication and lack of transparency. And when things aren't transparent, it's like, well, what's happening? What's wrong? What's going on? And the council is the employer, the employee, excuse me, of the city. We are the employee, meaning we work for our communities, meaning we are supposed to be the one who go to them, not them come to us. So the first thing that we can do is a establish transparent communication. Our website should have different languages on it simply because it's a diverse city.
I'll let you finish that thought. Go ahead.
DeCulah is a very diverse city, so we should be able to provide diverse communications.
All right. And I think a lot of elected officials forget that, you know, from our time, our time, you know, coming back and being appointed president and then elected president, starting when we got reorganized and back activated in June of last year. One thing I'm noticing is a lot of elected official, and this is just not on the council, this is across the spectrum. You know, whether it's the commissioners, state elected officials, board of education, you know, across the spectrum. I think, you know, I think a lot of elected officials have lost track that their employees, you know, I think they think the citizens are the employees and they tell us what to do. It's like, no, you come to our churches. You come to our spaces asking for our vote. You work for us. And so I think we definitely need, as citizens and voters, we need to start reminding these elected officials who they work for. Because a lot of decisions and a lot of things are getting made and the citizens, as you stated, have been left out. So yes, Ms. Ionia Mason, same question to you. How would you, how will you ensure transparency, public engagement and accountability in the council decisions if elected?
Piggybacking off of Ms. Pope, once elected, on top, I would make sure that with what she said, Zoom meetings, Teams meetings, that makes so much sense because not everyone can come down, but they have kids, they have families. They have to come home and cook dinner and all that. So it's not possible all the time. So that's perfect. I loved it. That makes sense to me. So that should be essential. And community meetings and town hall meetings, if you can't do it, have it streaming. How we're doing it right now, have it to stream where people can see it and they can come, and they can give their feedback. Instead of people just making decisions without others knowing, let me know what's going on before you start the permit. So in addition to that, we have kids, the youth is our future. So why aren't we making sure that they're part of it? Why aren't we having little talks with them, having different powwows with the children to find out what they feel is needed or what they feel could happen differently for them? That's my main focus is making sure the kids are involved and piggybacking off of Erica because that was excellent. We're going to do some Zoom meetings to make sure that everybody is included and that this is inclusive.
Okay. All right. You beat the time. All right. So going to the next question. You know, me and my education chair is John Cox, our second vice president, he lives in this area. So I know he's gonna care about this next question. So how should DeCulah balance maintaining like the green spaces, parks, other open areas with residential and commercial development? We know there's been a lot of development all across Gwinnett. DeCulah is not an exception to that. So if elected to the council, how would you balance that, balance that growth with trying to maintain those beautiful parks? And it's green spaces.
For me, so I would say, I would say that in order to make sure, maintain that growth, first part, we need to make sure the larger, larger corporations that's coming in building, that they have, how can I say it? Those larger corporations should be responsible for a part of that infrastructure. It shouldn't be solely based on the residents. So in order for that to happen, there needs to be some type of stipulation to inform them like, hey, if you're coming in and building this and making all these changes and bringing all the people here, we should equate some sort of policy for them to be involved in the infrastructure. It shouldn't be solely the residents. The other part of that, the green spaces, I'm all for it. I feel that there should actually be bike trails. There should be bike trails out here. There should be the ability for these kids to be able to go to school. Sometimes parents can't get their kids to school. Sometimes kids are at school after hours. Who's picking them up? So there should be the opportunity for them to ride their bike back home. There should be the opportunity for them to get there safely in well-lit areas. There are so many dark roads on, from the high school to even my home. It's dark. Where the, where's the lighting? So we need the ability for these kids to have safe environment in order to transport back and forth, homeschool, work. Because some are working at Taco Bell and the other restaurants up the street. But who's this, but other than having to catch an Uber, right? So in order to do that, we need to make sure that those things are in place for the kids because they are the future.
Okay. All right. Same question to you, Ms. Pope. And I reread the question. You know, how should DeCulah balance maintaining their green spaces, park and open areas with residential and commercial development?
That is an excellent question because as you stated, DeCulah wasn't an exception. In 2020, we went from 6,000 residents to 8,000 currently. So that's a lot of growth. And a lot of it has been commercial, commercial growth. It's a word that I think people will look over, which is smart development, not just developing to develop. So if you haven't been to DeCulah lately, there are like stretches of just dentist offices. Now, everybody should have a great smile. However, we really think about smart development. And what we have to consider is what do we already have and what don't we have? So currently in DeCulah, we don't have a youth center. Our children who go to the middle school and our high school, it's all on one big stretch of road. What they end up doing is they are hanging out at the library. That's the only place that they can go to. So currently, right now, smart development is basically just filling in those gaps of things that are actually needed. Mixed pop, mixed development, you know, we have to consider that we want people who work in DeCulah to live in DeCulah too. We shouldn't have spaces where there are no, there's no space to grow your families because it's just not being a conversation brought to the community. And so at the end of the day, when you are a city council person, a lot of things have to go with ordinances. A lot of the stuff that, that are going on around DeCulah right now are county-driven decisions. So it didn't take into consideration the things that are happening on a day-to-day basis. We have to be considerate of traffic. We have to be so considerate of all of these different things that unfortunately are conversations that aren't being had. We can grow up and not across, you know, we can have vertical apartments. We don't have to necessarily be flat. So it's just so many ways that we can do that. And right now, it's just going back to smart development. Let's make things make sense. The math has to match.
Right on time. All right. All right. So now we're going to get into some DeCulah specific questions. And I'll start with the development of the downtown hub. So the city and Ms. Pope, you can, you can stay there. The city just broke ground on the DeCulah City Core, intended to be a central mixed-use hub. What would be, I know that the current council is working on this, but if elected, what, what is your vision for that development? What are some guarantees that you'll demand in terms of design, affordability, maintenance, public and private space to kind of ensure it serves the residents and not just developers?
Yeah. So that's a really, really great thing that DeCulah has going right now. And I am grateful for the council that are current because they really saw the vision. I participated in the DeCulah 2035 meeting a couple of years ago where they wanted to say, what, what do we want DeCulah to look like? So DeCulah is a very young city. That means that the median age is 32. That means that people have small children. We're moving here for our kids to go to elementary, middle school and high school. So this, the DeCulah City Core Project is something that demands for everyone to be together. So right now, we have a downtown. It's very cute. It's very.
Ah, she was on a roll. I'm gonna stop the clock.
Very distinct that with the DeCulah City Core Project, that this is where that's going to be. What do I see? I see cultural events, you know, because like I said earlier, DeCulah is very diverse. However, you wouldn't think so when it comes to programming, when it comes to leadership, when it comes to all of these different facets. If you're going to live in DeCulah, you want to live in DeCulah, you want to thrive in DeCulah. And so as a city councilwoman, I would like to hold, no, I will hold the council responsible and accountable to providing those spaces. Like I said, our youth don't have anywhere to go. That is crazy work to me. You know, if it's a youth-driven city, our kids have to have someplace to go. So what I really want to do is use a portion for a youth center. Not just the library, like the library, they are overwhelmed enough, but we want to hire people who are not just librarians, but people who specialize in youth and engaging with them. So let's really think about DeCulah City Core as being the core of a city, using it for our benefit. Not necessarily just putting buildings up, but to make sure that we have what the city actually needs. And right now, we need a space to celebrate each other. We need a space to learn from each other. We need time and effort to go into this project to make it sustainable for the years to come in DeCulah. So from my vision, my vision is DeCulah needs a place to thrive and hopefully and prayerfully, this, the core is going to be that answer that I, I know that DeCulah will greatly benefit from.
All right. Thank you. All right. So same question to you, Mrs. Mason. Again, the city just broke ground on the DeCulah City Core, tended to be a central mixed hub. What is your vision if elected to the council for that development? And what guarantees will you demand in terms of the design, affordability, maintenance, public versus private space to ensure it serves the residents and not just developers?
So for me, I feel as though there should be festivals. Make it a thing where people, the community comes together, where the residents come together, where there is consistency, where you're able to see who's in office, who's working at the sheriff's station, the marshal's station. We need to meet those people. There need to be festivals. There need to be certain, many different types of community events that people come together and get to know who they live around and those that are in power or those that are making decisions for them. So those, those things need to happen. I'm not sure what the development is going to look like and if that's even a possibility. But once it's there, that needs to be a very special part of the growth of this city. Because everywhere else has it and they're able to, and it generates money. And it generates the opportunities for the people around. So with that, the food trust and come in, the different, the different small businesses that want to come in, they're able to be seen. Right? So those, the, the different places can have the opportunity to be a part of the community that they've started to grow in.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And Ms. Mason, you can stay there. I'll throw this next question to you. It'll be the final question about this project. How will you ensure if elected to the council that this new city core does not crowd out existing businesses or shift traffic burdens to nearby neighborhoods?
So hopefully there's a whole, well, if I'm not mistaken, if you're speaking, it's supposed to be a complete garage built. So only the, the, the actual parking is not an issue. It doesn't make an issue for the residents. The issue is going to come into the traffic. So that goes back to making the corporations, the places that are making these decisions and building all of the different, the different businesses responsible, or at least partly responsible for the infrastructure. That 316 is a beast and it is consistently that way because there are so many people and there's nowhere for, like, it, it shouldn't be that way. So if we made it, if it was made a requirement, the way that the growth is happening without the responsibility of those companies, it would not be in the state in which it is right now. It should have been a requirement in the beginning. So now the residents in the area are the ones made to suffer. The other part of your question was, how can, what, what was the other part of your question?
So I reread it again, just for the audience as well, is how will you ensure that the city court does not crowd out existing businesses or shift traffic burdens to nearby neighborhoods?
So the other part of making sure that it doesn't shift out the small businesses, that should always be a priority because we that live here. And just, I actually moved here. I moved to Georgia for that reason, to be a part of a well, you know, a niche where everybody kind of comes together. That's what I thought when I got here. It's kind of, it's still there. But, oh, and I'm from California in case anyone doesn't know. So the culture shock is crazy. I love it, but if I knew that the traffic was going to be this way and the, the small businesses wasn't going to break down, like those things is why I moved here, to get the sense of like family essentially, right? So we need to make sure that these places, these companies are responsible for the infrastructure. It's a little too late for what's happening right now, but we can make a difference, difference for the future.
Okay. All right. Ms. Pope, same question. How will you ensure this new city core that DeCulah has a plan does not crowd out existing businesses or shift traffic burdens to nearby neighborhoods?
Woo, that's a loaded question. Well, first of all, let's get back to what we, what I said initially, which is bringing people a seat to the table. So the city core project is going to bring everybody hopefully to the table. But most importantly, our businesses, our small business owners who have been here for centuries, and that's not for a long time. So just bringing them to the table so that, A, you don't feel like you're being crowded if you're a part of the conversation. Hosting quarterly business meetings with the business owners to figure out what those gaps look like. What does that look like for a person who is my ice cream business shop owner? Do we really want to make sure that other people in the core city, you know, the, the DeCulah City Core, that it's three ice cream shops there? You know, making sure that the, that there is an actual business community that is connected, I think is going to be the biggest thing. And when it comes to traffic, I mean, we can't really, I mean, if you've never been to DeCulah, I mean, we don't have that many roads. At some point, it's going to be backed up. But like she said earlier, you know, having a parking deck is something that the council considered. There's a place to party. Our current downtown is literally a strip of maybe six businesses. I can only imagine how they must be feeling with the core project across the street. I can only imagine the stressors that they're feeling. So the only way I can really alleviate that stress is to bring them to be a part of the conversation, ensuring that when it comes to owning a business, like I said, they make cities thrive. They make cities hum. I would love, I love El Hanente. It's in DeCulah. I don't necessarily want to go to Tequila Mama, but they're literally on the same road. But I hope that there was a conversation between the two for them to understand like, hey, we're not favoring another over a different one. What we want to do is make sure that we're not over saturating, like with the dentist offices. We're not over saturating.
You can finish that thought.
I'm just saying, it's something about dentist offices here. It really bothers me.
No more. Say, don't bring no more dentists. DeCulah, they got more than enough. So if y'all need y'all teeth fixed and you having trouble, like DeCulah got most of the dentist offices.
We got all of it.
I'm gonna pause just for briefly before we transition next question and ask the audience, if you got questions, please put them in the chat. We'll get to them after this next segment on parks and recreations. So at this time, we'll transition. So at this time, we'll transition to that. Also want to remind the audience, early voting has already started. Um, the PSC election, so like I've mentioned before, if you live inside the city limits, you have two polling locations. You gotta go to the vote this year. You go to regular city hall and vote for your city council candidates. And then you'll go to your normal early voting precinct, which just depend on where you live. It's maybe the voter registration election building. It may be the Rose Jordan Park. Um, but go to www.nvp.sos.g a.gov and you'll be able to see all of the early voting precincts for Gwinnett County. You can go to any of those precincts right now and vote. Election times a little bit different than city hall than it is for PSC. So if you're voting for city hall, unfortunately, you only got from nine AM to five PM to go vote. But the good thing is this Saturday, you can go vote from nine to five this upcoming Saturday. So if you work during the week and those hours are not convenient, and that may be something. Uh, all of these city council candidates, if elected, y'all need to be pushing the council to do is extending those voting hours to at least seven o'clock, similar to the, the county where it's seven to seven. You don't necessarily have to open it at seven. I mean, I think you should, but otherwise at least extend their closing time to seven o'clock to give people time to get back from downtown Atlanta, back into Gwinnett County and they can vote during the week. So if you can't vote during the week, this Saturday is the last Saturday that you can go vote. You can vote Saturday for your PSC elections, same thing. Polling precinct will be open Saturday from nine to five. The only bonus is Sunday voting, if you're voting for Public Service Commissioner, is also open this coming Sunday. Um, that's coming up that you can vote for your Public Service Commissioner. So please do that. Please say yes to the East Plots because we need this money to keep our schools and everything built. Um, so and, and also, like I said to the guests, just watching online, like we got a lot of people in here. Please drop your questions in the uh chat and we will get to them after this next segment. So I want to uh transition, Ms. Pope, you can stay there on Parks and Bricks. Um, so uh, there's a new golf course at Maple Creek Park that's under development. What would be, if elected, what is your broader strategy for any parks that is getting built in DeCula, trails or any recreational amenities? Uh, since there is so much growth that does that, let me rephrase. So the growth does come at a cost of green spaces. I guess it goes back to a question I asked earlier. How will you be balancing that if elected? Or how would you try to at least?
Okay, so you have different parks. You got your county parks and you got your city parks. And those are two different buckets of money, two different buckets of, you know, regulations and, and things like that. One of the things that we could consider, right, is if there's a golf course, we can use golf carts and you can usually get in your little cart and go around the city. You can go run over there to the DeCula City Core because it's literally all right there. Um, so when it comes to the parks and trying to prioritize, you know, what we do, because we have Rabbit Hill Park, which is a county park that's literally, so, so we love parks as well, Paul. We love parks as well. So it's all in the little hub. And so I think your question was, how do I prioritize the green space?
Yeah, how will you balance that? The, the, the development of new amenities coming into the city? Balance that with trying to preserve some of the beautiful green space. Cause my education chair, I hope he's on tonight. He need to ask his question. He, he been upset by them destroying one of the parks to put something there. I forgot what he said they put in DeCula, but he been mad about that. So.
Yeah, yeah. So basically, like I said before, making it make sense, you know, even if we are creating these new spaces that, you know, people want to move to, to a city that has things going for itself. You know, when you look at a subdivision, you want a pool so you can go to your pool. Um, so when I think about, you know, utilizing our green space that we already have and adding on to the new things that are coming, because again, all of these things are brand new. These are all things that unfortunately weren't considered with the, with the community in itself. But like I was saying, and this is just me off the dome, just thinking about how can we benefit from this new golf course? And what we could do is, and that, that addresses the traffic concerns, using the golf carts to go to and from because it's a small little hub. Um, we do want to keep our city park because it's ours and we've invested time in it. Um, what I would like to do is utilize it for community engagement purposes. You know, don't send people to the county park, which is further away. How about we utilize our city park, which is the Maple uh Park? And using that what we already have and just, because it's purpose, when it's purposeful, it makes sense, right? So just ensuring that with the green space that we have, that we actually utilize it so that it doesn't feel like we just tearing down trees, but ultimately utilizing what we already have.
Okay. And Ms. Mason, same question to you and I, I re-asked the question again. Uh, of course, we know there's a new golf course that's being built there at Maple Creek Park that's currently under development. Uh, what would be your broader strategy if elected? Uh, with parks, trails and any recreational amenities, especially so growth doesn't come at the cost of green spaces? So how would you be balancing all of these new uh parks and trails and recreational amenities coming into DeCula? How would you balance that coming in with trying to preserve some of the, the beauty of the city?
First and foremost, we need to ask the residents what they think. How about that? Why don't we find out what the residents want to do with the space? What they feel that it would benefit them? We want to see what the, for me, I would think that more people will want to utilize it for working out. Um, it should be a whole little area for working out. It should be a, its own designated spot for bike trails. There should be opportunities to make those things happen. But if we're just tearing it down and saying, hey, let's re, let's rebuild the playground that we just built five years ago, that's not economically smart, first off. Secondly, we want to make sure that the residents that are actually here have a say so and where their dollars are being spent. Okay, we want to, we, we want to make sure that those residents want to have a golf course down the road. Like, we want to make sure that those things are economically freeing for everyone. Not just a certain group. We want everyone to be able to benefit from those opportunities, not just the select few. We want those people who are paying their money, their tax dollars to have the opportunity to say, hey, yeah, golf course, eh, I'm not gonna be able to pay that club fee. So the, the majority are saying, no, why are we doing it? So let's find out first.
I like that answer because I think a lot of times, you know, the uh councils and sometimes even the, the commissioner level as well. Um, you know, they see dollars and their businesses coming in, but you're not getting community input before you start, you know, tearing up a lot of these green spaces that citizens like and love. Um, so we're gonna go to a question in the chat. I do see one in the chat. We can get that one on the screen from Ms. Rushing. Um, and see if I can get, okay. So she says, uh, unfortunately voter turnout throughout Gwinnett County has been low. And this, this go to you, Ms. Mason, since you already here. Um, can you share three things that you would implement? I'm gonna keep, if elected, uh, you would implement to reengage the community? Or in this case, even, I'm just gonna speak from what I seen in Grayson because that was just, I don't, I mean, they treated like it was a regular day, like no voting was going on when I went by there. So I'mma re, rephrase Ms. Russian question if she don't mind. Uh, how would you ensure that you're getting that the pre, that the, the city is doing a good job promoting the fact that there's an election?
Okay. Good question. Let me, let me ponder on that a moment.
Okay.
So for that to be something where people can be more aware, there needs to be more, again, community engagement. It can't just be, hey, I posted this on the city website. We need to make sure that other people are made aware. We need to make sure that there's signs outside of city hall. There should be signs um along city hall to show these things. Um, if I'm not mistaken, it, it, it should be a sign to inform people that early elections has already begun. There should be things in place because now, there's very few people that go go to DeCula website. There has to be a reason for people to go on these websites for them to even see it in the first place. That's first off. Secondly, when I went to go see if my name was on the website, I had to figure it out. So if it's not there easily visible or to know what to click on, who's gonna know? And then if you're older, now you gotta figure it out. So that's a problem in itself. So there has to be something where people can say, okay, this is what I need to do. This is where I need to go in order for those things to happen. If you don't know, you just don't know. So they have to make sure that people are made aware of these things, not just by posting it on the website. Because even when I went to go look for myself, I was searching to find out where to find it. So I, and, and I'm just one person. I know I'm not alone. So that's my answer.
Okay. All right. Same question for you, Ms. Pope. Uh, says unfortunately voter turnout throughout Gwinnett County has been low. And matter of fact, I think congressional uh candidate, um, in congressional district thirteen, Jasmine Clark, and also current state rep, said that we're the lo, second lowest, I think, in voter turnout in the county. So same question, and I re-put it back on the screen. Uh, can you share three things that you would implement to reengage the community? Or get them involved and let them know there's an election to vote for this year for, in the city of DeCula if elected?
Absolutely. So let's begin with the idea of voter education. Um, so Gwinnett is a very special place. We are the only county that forces people to go to their actual municipal city council hall where you can go vote. You not, you don't go to your regular voting place. So quick example, my neighbor who lives down the street, he did not have a voting plan. He was gonna vote for Erica Pope only on election day, but went to the wrong location at six forty-five. Let's start there. So the lack of knowledge of where to go to vote, because that is important. Because people, if you're not plugged in, you don't know where to go. One thing that we can do is absolutely that website. I mean, you get depressed just clicking on it. It's not vibrant at all. You go look at it and you be like, what? And then you just probably just be like, you know what? Never mind. So one, just making it more inviting. Because if somebody, if I want to know something about my city, I'm gonna go to the website and I'm gonna go, what are they saying now? So one, really trying to focus on perhaps making a social media campaign, right? Because we want to get the information out there about voter turnout. I lost by ten votes, guys. That is ridiculous. Only because A, I didn't go to the right people. So what that looked like was me knocking on the wrong doors and I didn't, and people don't know that they don't live in incorporated DeCula. So what we could do is really focus on that voter education piece and how we can do that is creating a social media campaign. Also utilizing those town halls to get out there and show your face. Because if you know that I'm a city council person and you know that elections are in November and you have access to me, you're gonna reach out to me and be like, hey, what about that? You know, that's what's going to have to happen. So a social media campaign, actually having engaging conversations. Um, and then also just going out to the people and meeting them where they are. That's only way you can reengage anything is to meet people where they are. And as a social worker, that is literally what my job is. I meet patients, I meet clients, I meet organizations where they are. And the only way I can reengage anyone is to start a conversation.
Okay. And then Ms. Pope, you can stay there. Thank you for that. Uh, we're gonna move into the final round of our last questions. And this is, of course, is gonna be around traffic, which is a hot, always a hot button in, in Gwinnett County. So it says, Gwinnett County plans to realign Stanley Road and Winder Highway, which is expected to affect the flow of traffic in DeCula. How will, if elected, how will you coordinate with the county or the state to ensure that the changes don't worsen congestion, divert traffic into residential areas or cause cut-throughs?
Woo. So three sixteen is the hub to Athens. I mean, you have to get on three sixteen to get to Athens and then, and only, the only way you can get to eighty-five. So it's a heavily populated, um, it's a heavily populated road that has to happen. So the biggest issue, and I think I've said this in the theme of this evening, has been miscommunication or the lack thereof. The city council should be talking directly with the DOT. They should be talking directly with the county because what's going to happen is exactly what you said. People are gonna cross, go through my subdivision trying to get to another state. Or excuse me, it feels like another state, but to get to the other side of DeCula. And for instance, there was a road outage for a minute. It was like for two days. And when I tell you people were zipping through my subdivision, it was an issue. I was so scared for the kids in my neighborhood because people weren't paying attention. They were driving so fast trying to get somewhere. And that was not considered because there wasn't even any conversation. And I'm just assuming that the current council didn't talk to these people about it. But would, did you really advocate on what that's gonna look like for this city? Because three sixteen has to happen. You can't just shut it down. There's, there's literally no way. So in order to have these conversations, you have to be relational. I, as a city council person, should be participating in these very, very strategic conversations to advocate on my behalf. I know that sometimes people think of the big Gwinnett County as like the monster. And oh, I'm scared to say something to them, but no, this is literally what my job is as your advocate, is to talk about how this is going to impact my communities, impact my subdivision, thus impact the quality of life, right? Traffic is a beast in metro Atlanta. You know that you're gonna, it's gonna take you an hour to get anywhere on eighty-five, which means it's gonna take you an hour and a half to get somewhere on three sixteen. I commute two hours a day to and from my job in Johns Creek and Decatur respectively. So just idea about that, at the idea of sitting down and saying, hey, I look like DeCula. I live in DeCula. You should talk to me because this is my city. This is your county, but this is my city and I know what's best for my city. So that's what I would do is enforce them to talk to me about it.
Okay. All right. This is Ayanea Mason. I read the question to you as well. Uh, reread the question also for the audience. So it says, Gwinnett County plans to realign Stanley Road and Winder Highway. And it is expected to affect traffic flow through DeCula. Uh, how will you, if elected, uh, coordinate with the county or the state to ensure that the changes don't worsen local congestion and divert traffic into residential areas or cause cut-throughs?
So first off, we're gonna go back to what I was speaking on earlier. The, having crosswalks, having um trails, the, the sidewalks are needed. So in order to make sure that we're not putting our kids in danger, people that are walking and crossing the roads in dangers, we probably need some more um traffic lights. And with making those traffic lights, we need to make sure that these traffic lights are perfectly timed or well timed. The timing of these traffic lights are important in order for to make sure that the traffic does flow. In order, in, 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 I've been so many places where it does not. So we, even on Winder and three sixteen, that um traffic light at QT, why are we waiting for the turn signal? And there's a row of cars that needs to come down the road. In order for that to make sense, we need to make sure that these traffic lights are timed correctly in order for the amount of cars that's way back in the back, that still is long line, is being able to cross that street. So we, that is a great or bigger part of that. In order to make sure that the traffic lights are timed correctly, there has to be a sensor of sorts. Because it, it, we're, we're too far advanced not to have the sensors here at this point. If we're gonna keep building, we need to have those type of things implemented in our communities as well. So we need to have the sensors in order for the um, like to know, hey, we still got a long row of cars. Let's keep the light green so that road can get through. And then change the light because once you go in down at three sixteen, that's a freeway. So why don't we make sure that the cars are able to finish their, their journey before we change the light? That's all I got. Crosswalks, lighting and traffic lights, that makes sense. Uh-oh. I can't hear you.
All right. Sorry about that. I'm, uh, I'mma ask a follow-up question to that. Are there any, you can stay right there, Ms. Mason. Are there any additional intersections or like corridors within DeCula, within DeCula that you view as a high priority for improvements? Um, so like any turning lane, signal time and pedestrian safety? So are there any parts of DeCula that you noticed that, you know, if elected, that you would come in and say, hey, I know this is a high traffic. We need to do something to fix this area because it's not the safest for people to be traveling down? Or maybe there's some, something in terms of infrastructure in that area that needs to be redone? So any places in DeCula that you can think of that you would prioritize?
High Hope Road is one. It's wherever traffic coming down High Hope Road onto that three sixteen. Why are the lights longer than, longer than what they are? Why isn't it timed for? Why isn't it timed for the turn to get onto High Hope Road along with the, the right turning lane to go at the same time? It, it's just the way of timing and how they have it set, how it's set up, that is not conducive for the residents. I know they're, I don't presume to know what others are thinking. But when they did it, there had to be some type of, um, someone, okay, well, maybe we need to adjust this timer. That mean, I'm just saying, like, at some point, somebody in this timeframe should have said, okay, well, maybe we should adjust this. Because High, High Hope Road is a, a, the long stretch, and there's forever cars coming down that road. The train tracks. Why, why is it that we don't have, it's a train track right there on, um, Winder, um, by the high school? Why isn't that train tra- why isn't that light fixed for the residents? We're, we're concerned about the train, but what about the residents that need to get to and from home, work, pick up their kids? That needs to be a priority as well. Um, those are just the two that I can think of offhand right now. But those are very important, because it's high traffic areas.
Okay. And before transitioning into Ms. Pope to answer the same question, this has been, I think, uh, a very, all our candidate forums have been great. But I think, you know, if you watch any of these forums, you're seeing how much city council touches will happen. Y'all be blaming Joe Biden and Trump for traffic and potholes and Governor Kemp and all these other people. And it's like, no, it's these people that's running for your city council and running for your mayor that handle these things. So I know there's not a civic education forum per se, but, but we are learning who handles what when it comes to things that are happening and developing in our communities. And we're seeing the impact, the how important and why it's important to vote in these city council races. So I will say before we transition to Ms. Pope, if you have not voted in your city council and your mayoral race this fall, please make a plan to go vote. Polls, polling precincts, the early voting has already started. Um, for city council races and mayoral races at your city, local city hall, they're only open from nine to five during the week, but you can take advantage of early voting. Again, this Saturday from nine AM to five PM on Saturday. Your public service commissioner, that's at your regular early voting precinct. You can go to your regular early voting precinct. Gwinnett is open, uh, from seven to seven during the week and nine to five on Saturday and this Sunday. Uh, of course, this is the last weekend to take advantage of early voting, so def- at least on the weekend. Um, but you will have Monday through Friday, but it's only from nine to five for city hall. I mean, city council elections at your city hall. And it's, uh, seven to seven for PSC. So if you can't go because of your work schedule, please make a plan to get to city hall between nine AM and five PM on this Saturday. And finally, your last day to vote is on election day. I hate to call, uh, voting, election day, no, election day your last day to vote. We in a, a state where we got early voting. So election day is just the last day to vote. So if you missed all these opportunities, pollings, poll, all the polling precincts, both the municipal ones, and when we use that word municipal, we talking about city council and mayor FYI. Um, your, your municipal elections will be all of the precincts, whether city hall or your regular early voter, or your regular polling precinct on election day will be open from seven to seven. So that's the only time with these city council and mayoral elections, where your polling precinct will be open up at seven in the morning and it'll shut down at seven PM. Go to city hall. If you're voting for your city council and mayor, you have to do it at city hall, not your regular polling location that you typically would go to. That's where you would go to vote for PSC. So if you live in the city limits, you have to make a plan to vote at two different locations. You live outside of city limits, it's business as usual. You go to your regular early voting precinct, or you'll go to whatever your election day precinct is, which is gonna be different. And as always, go to www.mvp.sos.g a dot gov to, um, look up where you should go in terms of your polling precincts. So same question to you, uh, and follow-up question, Mrs. Pope. Uh, are there, other than what Mrs. Ay- uh, Ayadea Mason has already laid out for us? And you could add on if you agree with her. Well, you can agree with her and talk about the same ar- area, but if you got other areas, definitely speak on it. Are there any additional intersections or corridors within DeCula that you view as high priority for improvements?
Yeah. So DeCula Road, which is our main stretch of road. I mean, everything in DeCula starts at DeCula Road. That's also where all the dentist's office are and our elementary and our middle school and our high school. So just imagine when it's time for kids to get out of school, everybody trying to go to Kroger at the same time. Not to mention, not to mention the people who are cutting through trying to get a, around the, the main issue, which is three sixteen. So just dealing with that, because that affects your, a quality of life. Because I'm trying to hurry up and get my kid out, and then I'm in traffic, then the buses are coming, and then I'm, it's just a lot. And I know we weren't a part of that conversation at all. Now, hopefully the city was, but I know for a fact, cuz I would've been like, please don't do that. That's not smart. Um, but she made a very great point. We have railroad tracks and they stop movement in the whole city. I'm talking about if there's a train and, and it's always the train that don't move for a good ten, fifteen minutes. So now everybody's backed up, everybody trying to go in reverse at the same time, trying to get around the train. And then when you finally make it to the journey, like, ooh, I see the road, the train moves. And then everybody mad and upset, because I just waited that entire time. So you beat that side of the train, but then you go around and five minutes, guess what? The other half of that train still ain't moved. So let's talk about the fact that that really doesn't, because God forbid you need to go and get to your kid's parent teacher conference and it starts at six o'clock. And you're thinking, oh, I'm gonna be good. I'm just gonna go over to train tracks, and then you cannot. So DeCula Road is honestly the hub, no, it is the hub of DeCula. And if that part shuts down, there's literally nothing that you can do. So that, though, that's what my answer would be. We need to talk about this. And of course, dealing with the traffic, uh, starts with the timers. I mean, it just has to make sense. And they've done a good job. I will say that.
All right. So we at the closing of our program, uh, Ms., Ms. Rushing wanted to remind me about East Plies. So yes, please say yes to East Plies. I know there's a push out there from different groups that don't want us to support East Plies as voters, because you don't like the board having, you know, you're not pleased with some of the decisions made by the current school board. But I'm always of the mindset, you don't cut your nose despite your face. If you're not happy with the school board, they'll be up for reelection in twenty twenty-six or May. You can come out and vote them off the board, or you can go ahead and announce your candidacy and run against them if you don't like their decision. But do not, you know, cut your nose despite your face, cuz if you get elected, you gonna be wanting that money back. And there's gonna be decisions that, you know, there's gonna be programs that GCPS and Buford City Schools will have to cut in order to fund, uh, the upkeep of their schools. I mean, I know Buford's got a lot of money, cuz they just built a multi-million dollar stadium. But Gwinnett has the largest school system in the county, hundred and eighty thousand students, and there's over a hundred and some plus schools. We cannot give up their sales tax money, um, and then have to use our general funds to try to, you know, keep the maintenance of these schools. So I know all these people talking about whether, you know, students been rate been flat, but I'm seeing development all over in my area in District Three. Uh, well, county commissioner of District Three would be District One for the school board. So in District One, I'm seeing development everywhere. And the main theme I kept hearing at every superintendent, uh, search was parents and teachers talking about all this development, all of these kids coming in, trailers. So the county needs to invest in more schools. And they can't do that if we get rid of our East Plies. East Plies gives them that flexibility to do that without cutting some of the programs that a lot of people love at GCPS and also Buford City Schools. So please say yes to East Plies. If you don't want the people that's on the board not to have control over that money, vote them off in twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-eight. You got three years, the next three years, to get rid of them. And then you ain't got to worry about them being in control of that money. So that's all I say about that, because I know that's where that push is coming from. Um, and I've explained that to Alma, but it's like the push ain't coming from, because I think people just, they don't like some of the decision the board has made. And again, if you don't like the decision, take it out at the ballot box in May. But do not get rid of your funding. That, that just doesn't make any, that's not, doesn't make good fiscal sense. So at this time, um, uh, Ms. Pope, since you have the mic, I'm gonna reset the clock real quick. So give me just a moment. I'll let, give you two and a half minutes to make closing remarks uh, about, uh, uh, to, no, just let voters know this is your last chance to talk to voters. And before you start, I do wanna remind all of the voters, Ms. Ay- Ayanea Mel- uh, Mason and Ms. Erica Pope are not competing against each other. They're running in two separate races. We did invite their opponents on to take place, answer questions, especially, um, uh, one of the incumbents that's already on the city council, but they did not respond to our request to attend. So as always, we're gonna go with whoever's here. And so at this time, Ms. Erica Pope, uh, let the people know why they should support you and, and anything else you'd like to say in your closing remarks.
Cool beans. Well, again, thank you so much, guys, for the Gwinnett NAACP. Just to have a forum that educates people, not just about who I am, but about the voting process. So, um, outside of just me being who I am, cuz this is who I am. As a city councilwoman, this is who I am. This is my authentic self. And this is what people need. People need authenticity when it comes to politics. Everybody's thinking about, I mean, and we should think about the national level, but real change starts at the local level. This is where our quality of life is being impacted. And a person like me is supposed to be in a place like this. I am a community connector. I am the resource hub. I know where to send you, when you need something and how to get it. So for me, it just makes sense for our city council to look like its community. And that's what will happen when I am elected as the city councilwoman in DeCula. Um, outside of that, I am a mom. I'm a wife. I am a person who's an actual community leader. And that's what's missing, unfortunately, in our current council. After twenty twenty-three, I could've gave up. You know, I could've said, no, this is a little bit too much. I ain't signed up for that. But I did. I signed up to go against adversity. And that's who I am as a person, and that's what people are going to get when they vote for me. Unfortunately, my opponent was appointed, so he doesn't really have footing in the community. And that's unfortunate, because you have time to create that. And I believe in community engagement and I believe in transparency, because that is what brings back the, the trust when it comes to people, when it comes to governance. I am not a politician. I am a public servant. My job is to serve the public. I'm going to serve my pub, my, the public, no matter what capacity that I am in. However, I can make more of a, a, a change and an impact when I'm in those rooms to advocate for, for the people who I know don't have a voice. When I'm in the spaces where I can say, no, that don't make sense, or that's just not smart, because somebody actually has to say that. A lot of times decisions are made based upon dollars. They're made based upon what people think that other people need. And my first hundred days, it's all about connecting who I am and meeting people where they are. I will be having a hundred day plan. I'm gonna identify the gaps, cuz I can assume I know what the gaps of DeCula are. But my job as a city councilperson is to go into the city and say, no, really, what's wrong with you? What do you not have? And what can I do to serve you? Cuz that is what city council is about. It's about serving. We're not talking about council representatives. City council. So you can find more about me at ericapopefordecula.com. I'm out here. I'm present, and I'm just really grateful for this opportunity, Paul, and I'm so appreciative of your organization.
Thank you. Thank you. And again, as I stated before, for those of you who live in unincorporated DeCula, and I'm gonna say this before we transition to Ms. Mason's closing remarks. If you cannot, if you're not able to vote for them because you live outside of city limits, you always donate. That's why we put they, their website up on the screen. So, and again, your money, that hundred dollars that y'all was sending Kamala last year, it'll go a lot further sending it to candidates that you wanna support than it would Kamala Harris, who's got a multi-million, close to a billion dollar budget. I'm, I'm just saying, you know, your, your dollars go a lot further, have a more of an impact given to local candidates. And I'm a big advocate of, of that, regardless of political party affiliation and what position's running. All, anytime you give into your local candidates, that's how you show your support. Uh, so Ms. Mason, we'll transition to you for final remarks. Uh, two and a half minutes, go right ahead and say whatever you wanna say to voters. Um, you know, in terms of, you know, whatever you wanna say to them before, before, as we wrap up.
I too would like to say thank you for inviting me, for making it a platform that I didn't have otherwise. So thank you. Um, the first part of it is for me, I'm a listener. I utilize my active listening skills. I, I've mastered it, if you will, because that's pretty much been my realm of living since I can really remember. And then I went to school and actually got a certificate for that, because I listen to people. I don't listen to answer, I listen to hear. So when I'm hearing you, I'm hearing what it is that you need. I'm hearing what it is that you're actually telling me. So if I have people coming to me, I'm listening and I'm hearing, and I'm using my heart, because I'm gonna use my heart to understand what you're saying. And what I can do with that is, sky's the limit. If I have the opportunity to hear you, I have the opportunity to help you in any fashion and facet of whatever the issue is. Cuz if I don't have the opportunity to hear you, there's no way that I can help with the problem or be a, um, solution to your issue. If I don't know it, I can't do anything about it. But if you tell me, I'm listening, and I'm actively listening. I'm making it a point, I'm, I'm duly noting what's going on. So even if I don't handle it right then, it's going to be handled, because I heard you. So I, I make a point to live my life of service. I live my life being a mom and listening to my kids. I live my life, I was a drug and alcohol counselor for about two years prior to me moving here. I listened. When those people were coming down or on, they talked to me, where they wouldn't talk to the doctor, they wouldn't talk to the, the case manager. They talked to me, because I listen and I hear them. And I'm the person that's sitting there, probably get hit, hit a couple of times even. I've gotten hit, but I'm still listening, because that's not who you are in life. That's who you are in that moment. So I'm gonna be there for you and support you, no matter what you're going through. And being, and being a paraprofessional in a severe and profound classroom, even though that they can't talk, I'm still listening. I'm still watching. I'm still the person that's saying, hey, give them a moment. I'm not even the teacher, and I'm able to understand those kids beyond what anybody can understand. They're still, right now, their teacher's like, why does he listen to you? Because I'm listening to him. Period. And I, and I can't make this up. I have a child in my classroom that he don't listen to nobody, but his mama and me. And how I got that is because I listen. I hear him. When he's in his mood and he's aggressive and fighting you, okay, give him a moment. They trying to pull him and pick him up? No, give him a moment. He's going through something. So that's what I do. Everything I've done in my life has always been an advocate for people, those that can't speak, that can't speak, and those that don't have a voice. So that is why you should vote for me, because I'm always hearing you.
All right. Well, listen, I mean, Ms. Mason made it clear. You vote for her, she gonna be listening to y'all. When y'all come to those council meetings and she ain't gonna be hiding from y'all. She gonna be out front trying to uh, let y'all know and be, be in the streets to let y'all know, uh, who she is and you can hear from her. So again, first of all, I wanna thank both Ms. Erica Pope and Ms. Ayanea Mason for coming on tonight and being part of this, uh, forum. And I will just bid, uh, let them go backstage. Thank y'all for joining us. Thank y'all for watching. I know I seen a couple of comments on YouTube about the, the viewership. They watching us on Facebook. They don't be on you. I don't know why y'all don't like watching us on, uh, uh, YouTube, cuz YouTube, according to Roland Martin, they, they support uh, for as advertising dollars of organizations like ours or any media company more than Facebook. Everybody like watching on Facebook, and that's fine. I, I don't really care where, where you watch us, whether it's Facebook, YouTube, or Twitter. Uh, we just appreciate the viewership. We just wanna get the information out to you. Just wanna remind voters, as we get ready to, uh, wrap things up on tonight, um, that early voting has started from nine to five, Monday through Friday. And also this Saturday is the last Saturday. You can go vote at your city hall. So if you have not voted, get out and vote. If you know people that live inside of the city limits, definitely, uh, encourage them to go vote. Encourage them to watch this forum and learn about the candidates that are, that are running. Encourage them to go look at the candidate that wasn't here tonight and see what they're talking about. So definitely look to go vote. We will be back here on Sunday with the Grayson, uh, candidates running for city council, uh, both, uh, Mrs. um, Rochelle Wright and Mr. Mike Bruce, running for the city council here in Grayson. That'll be on Sunday at seven o'clock. So we look forward to that conversation and are excited to have them on. I think Grayson, um, just had an election in twenty-three, and then they didn't have one in twenty-one, because the candidates were all unopposed. And so we're excited to talk to the candidates in Grayson, especially get their perspective on some of the things that occurred with Grayson not, uh, advertising the day of polling precinct. advertising the day of polling precinct. And so far, at least as of Friday of last week, they've only had, I mean, Saturday of last week, they only had twenty people voted. So if you have not voted in Grayson, please go out and vote. Please learn about Grayson. And if you want to wait till after you watch our forum on Sunday to figure out who to vote for, that's fine too. That's, that's a smart thing to do. So if you want to wait till after you listen to the candidates talk on Sunday and decide who you're gonna support, then that's fine too. If you press for time and Saturday's gonna be the only time you're gonna have to vote, they definitely go vote on Saturday. Go look up the candidates, pull up their websites, pull up their Instagram page, learn about them, email them, call them. Uh, figure out what their platform is all about and, um, and learn about those candidates. But again, Sunday, October twenty-sixth will be our Grayson City Council candidate forum. So please tune in for that. I want to thank everybody for joining us tonight. Again, if you want to learn more about us, go to www.gwinnettnacp.com. Please follow, share and like um, our social media pages and all the content that we're putting out about these candidate forums as well as our civic education forums. And then please join us at G Jack at seven o'clock on next, on the second Thursday in November, which will be the thirteenth. So if you want to learn more about us and what we're doing, please, uh, uh, come out on the thirteenth of November. We'll be at the Gwinnett Justice Administration Building in, uh, Conference Room A. And, uh, thank y'all for joining us. And y'all have a good night.